We're good? Okay. I'd like to call the regular council meeting in the Village of Wolverine Lake to order for December thirteenth, 2023. Please stand up and pledge the flag.
I pledge the flag to the United States of America and to the right of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its name.
Roll call please.
Duff?
Here.
Jeremini?
Here.
McNutt?
Here.
Kinda, yes. Uh, do we have any additions to business?
Yes, yes we do.
Um, got them. Motion, excuse. Yeah, that's true.
Your second.
Motion by McNutt, the second by Duff, to excuse Mr. Dumont, who notified us that he was not going to be here tonight. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Close, motion carries. Okay, now we move on to additions to business.
If we could, I'd like to add on item ten A two, under the recommendations and updates from our engineer, Mike Powell, the 2023 crack ceiling program. And then, I'd like to add an item twelve K. We have a request from the village attorney to enter into closed session to discuss pending litigation.
Okay.
So that would be closed session after the completion of item seventeen.
After seventeen.
Correct. So with those two changes, that's all I have. Thank you.
Perfect. Anything else? Your motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion.
Those two items. Motion by Duff?
Second.
Second by Jeremini. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Aye. Close, motion carries. Uh, correspondence. Uh, we've got some stuff from Oakland County Community Health Network for National Suicide Prevention Month. We want to have that be resolved. We want a motion forward on that. Motion by Duff, second by O'Brien, to, they've got the resolution here for us to approve. So with that, all in favor? Aye. Close, motion carries. Letter from Comcast, um, I don't know what that was. Did have a, a letter from Mr. Daley regarding some issues here. And anything else with that?
Received and filed.
Motion by Duff?
Second.
Second by O'Brien, received and filed. Counsel, correspondence. All in favor? Aye. Close, motion carries. Um, with that, we're at the first call of the public and not doing any assistance to address counsel on agenda items only. Anybody would like to speak on agenda items at this point? Feel free. Uh, motion open?
Motion open.
Motion by Duff?
Second.
Second by Jeremini. All in favor? Aye. Close, motion carries. Yes, sir. What do we have? You can state your name and address please.
Newt, 920 Penny Lake, also developing 325 Wolverine Drive.
Okay.
I had some comments about agenda ten A. I wouldn't mind listening to my presentation. Um, at first, I got a copy of plans.
Okay.
Days I could do, I think, last night.
It's Mr. Daley.
Um, and I see the pipe, but you're not going down in front of my desk.
Okay, well, have any, council have any problems opening when Mr. Powell's on it?
No.
Item?
No.
Okay. We'll, we'll call on you then.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Seeing none, motion to close.
Motion.
Motion by Duff, second by McNutt. And all in favor? Aye. Close, motion carries. Okay. Um, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Duff, second by Kaz Nicky. Any discussion on that? Roll call please.
Duff?
Yes.
Kaz Nicky?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Jeremini?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Uh, McNutt?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to board appointments. Item nine A, recommendation, council appoint Patrick Brzezelski to the planning commission for the term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-four.
I think I'm looking to appoint Patrick Brzezelski to the planning commission for expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-four.
Motion by Duff?
I've worked with him on the ZBI. Seems like a pretty good guy in terms of knowing his stuff with planning, zoning, and whatnot. I believe he actually has a degree in either zoning or planning.
Sure with planning, yeah.
Planning, yes.
Yes.
Um, so he's very knowledgeable. I think he'll be a great asset to the board.
And I also agree, he came before planning commission last month, and I think he's going to be a fine addition to the planning commission, so.
Yeah, originally I thought that he was going to be able to be here tonight, but he had a conflict that came up today, let us know that there was a good chance he wasn't. So, uh, we'll make arrangements to get him in, assuming that he is appointed to the planning commission tonight. Um, then we'll get him into the village, I'll get him signed up. So he'll be good to go for the next planning commission meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, the second there. Any discussion?
No.
Besides that, all in favor? Aye. Close, motion carries unanimously. Ten A, recommendations and health updates from Mr. Powell regarding one Penny Lake Drive Storm Lake, St., Lake Storm Sewer enclosure.
Thanks, council. Andy Stone and DPW and I have been dealing with a couple drainage issues along Wolverine Drive for forty years plus. And it was requested that by DPW administration, that we do an initial survey and a plan for how to deal with drainage problem in two sections of Wolverine Drive that are the worst, quite frankly, in the coverage. Um, and if you don't mind, I will go over the board. I've got my big files here. I brought the eleven by seventeens for you, but if your eyes are on mine, you're not going to agree to even the eleven by seventeens. So there are, is there a remote? There we go. So there are the two sections in the village that are, quite frankly, some of the worst, um, is the taking care of the intersection of Wolverine Drive and Penny Lake Road. Uh, there's a big culvert that runs underneath Wolverine Drive in this location, and then there's an open ditch from here all the way down to the Greenaway Drain. Uh, that area carries all the water from this subdivision down Wolverine Drive, all of this from Pinecrest, from south, just south of Pinecrest, all this way down here. And once the water gets down into this area, there's so much water flowing, it carries so much dirt, that DPW ends up having to clean that drain out, if not every year, every other year, in order to allow that open ditch to remain open enough to carry the water, to drain the water out from this intersection here. So, um, this is the first section that I proposed in closing this ditch line, not filling it all the way up to where the yards will be even with the road, because you still need an area for the road. Remember, we don't have curb and gutter here in the village, so we have open ditch. So even though these two to three foot deep ditches along here would be filled in, we still need a six inch or a one foot slope off the road into a swale, a minor swale, uh, over top of, uh, their yards. Um, the intent, however, is there'd be no culverts underneath their driveways. We would be putting a structure in everybody's yard in order to pick up the water coming off the road. I'll show you the plans for that in a minute. The other section is from Pinecrest south to Adrian. Uh, this area here, we've just experienced a major washout and a, uh, a small, um, what did you call that, Andy?
Sinkhole.
Sinkhole. So we lost a portion of the road here in Adrian, and there's a barrel over it right now. And these ditch lines are constantly flowing with water from this area up all the way to the last driveway here on Wolverine Drive, and then it runs into a storm sewer going into Pinecrest. This area runs across Antica Beach and outlets into the lake in that location. So these are the two areas that we've done plans for enclosing it. Here in this first section, we have open ditches here in Wolverine Drive, but this section of this culvert keeps getting backed up and blocked up. This is an eighteen inch culvert right here. And then the culvert is actually deeper than the ditch line, so DPW constantly has to be ditching out this, cleaning out this ditch line here. These plans, I can hopefully keep them up here. These plans start down here at, uh, the Greenaway Drain, and then the proposal is to just place a culvert in the bottom of the ditch, just two feet deep, um, and put a pipe in under the ditch line underneath Wolverine Drive, and then creating a structure here with a pipe flowing, a pipe catching the water from the north, and a pipe catching water coming this way from the west. So like that. And so we'd be carrying ninety-nine percent of the water in a pipe, not eroding the ditch line as the water tries to run down through the ditch line here in Wolverine Drive. Um, we also have structures, as I said, in front of people's homes, just before their driveways, to pick up the road water, because even though we have a pipe underground, we still have to pick up that road water that would be in a shallow ditch line, shallow swale line along in front of these homes, and then outlet here in the Greenaway Drain. Um, and then the other section is where the, where we have that sinkhole. That, uh, that holder used to work a lot better. When it was younger as well. So we have, um, under Adrian Drive here, yeah, that's all right. Thank you. So we have Adrian Drive, this is where we have our sinkhole on the north side of Adrian Drive. Uh, it goes right on through, the culvert itself has disintegrated, uh, so no matter what happens, this new culvert needs to be put in. So the plan is to put in, to, uh, to enclose the ditch line from the south side of Adrian Road, all the way along, um, Wolverine Drive, and tie it into an existing enclosed ditch line. This section is already enclosed. Tie it into this existing enclosed ditch, which then flows out under the road to the lake itself. And again, we have pickups between driveways so that the, uh, shallow swales could drain, uh, carrying the water from the roadway. Um, we have a, we have, these three homes here, uh, have sump pumps that run about every minute. If you've stood out here, this one here shoots water out into this ditch line that flows down, all the way down this ditch line. This home has an outlet into the ditch right here, and it actually bubbles out, it actually creates, uh, uh, boy, it looks like a geyser coming out of the ground in this location. Um, this house then has the same thing that bubbles out here, so this ditch line is constantly flowing all the way out until it runs into this, uh, storm sewer that goes underneath, uh, Wolverine Drive there. Um, so it's a, it's not a storm sewer. We have to be very careful. We have, uh, electric lines, we have AT&amp;T, we have a water main that parallels this one. So it's a very shallow pipe that can carry that water, so the water doesn't carry the dirt with it, and it will relieve DPW from a major maintenance issue. And I'm really glad Andy's here so that you can ask him questions regarding it as well. Now, from an engineering perspective, this is a really great idea. Whenever we can enclose ditches and carry water in a pipe, it solves a great deal of problems. Um, however, your wisdom is needed, because I did put this out to three contractors, and I have, uh, some costs to share with you. Two of the three contractors that I reached out to, uh, gave me not bids, but estimates for budget reasons, and with some ideas as to maybe how we can take some monies out of the project. Contractors are really the experts when it comes to taking money out of projects. Um, so, uh, the first contractor is the one that we've used for many of the water main extensions here in, uh, the village, not sanitary extensions, but water mains. Um, the section of pipe, uh, running between the Greenaway Drain and Wolverine Drive is ninety-six thousand dollars. Uh, that's the estimate to enclose that ditch. The estimate to enclose the ditch from Adrian up to Pinecrest is fifty-five thousand dollars. So his estimate is a hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars. Um, that, however, does not include, uh, doing some driveway repair, if we're going to renew those culverts underneath the driveways, uh, and dig that pipe all the way through the driveways. We have some driveway repairs, and we have, uh, a section of road that's going to have to be replaced there at the intersection of Wolverine Drive and Penny Lake Road, and so we really need to add about five thousand dollars to that estimate. So we're, we're really in the range of, uh, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars from, uh, that contractor. The other contractor, uh, got a price of ninety-six thousand dollars for both the sewers. And again, we're going to have to add about five thousand dollars, uh, into that for the repair of the roadway and the, and the, uh, driveways. Um, and then, of course, I'd be hoping that DPW can come in and do some rigging, some, uh, seating emulging of the ditch line when we get done, because it'll be an all-grass ditch line, just about, uh, six inch deep swale off the road instead of the big deep ditches. The homeowners will love it, because they can just ride, they're riding one more in the ditch instead of having to beat it up down. Uh, and they won't have that flow of water running in front of their house every time it rains. Um, so this is where, uh, Andy and I need council's, um, uh, input. Uh, both of these sections of roadway are the major road, so we will be using a major road funds, obviously, for this drainage, uh, repair. Um, but it is, uh, it is fairly costly, and so it's a, it's an issue of, uh, enclosing the pipe, uh, which will help lower the groundwater in that area and pick up the sump pump leads that are constantly pumping into this ditch line that's flowing, um, versus, uh, the DPW doing the maintenance that they have to do annually or biannually. And, uh, certainly Andy is much more aware of that than I am. So I'm here to answer any questions. Andy's here to answer any questions you might have. Um, we'd be looking for this work to be done, uh, yet this year. We're looking, when the lake level drops down, that'll pull the groundwater down, it'll be a lot easier for the contractors to do the work. Um, the only permit we need, because the village owns the roads, is we need an Eagle permit and a, and a, uh, a water, uh, resource permit to be able to just run our pipe into the Greenaway Drain. That's a formality permit, but it's not a big deal, but we need a permit from them to do that. Otherwise, it would be owned and operated by the village. Um, and that's why we're before you today.
You'd mentioned that there was three contractors, so...
Yes, the third contractor, uh, unfortunately didn't get back to me, and, uh, I hounded him and hounded him, and he didn't get back to me yet. Uh, so I will expect that, um, we'll, we'll get his price, and, uh, when I do some modifications to the drawing based upon their recommendation, I'll go out and be same contractor and publicly bid it, so we get much better and precise bids they'll bring back to you next month.
We have a resident here?
We do.
Wanted, uh, if he left some comments?
Yes, and he has some very, uh, personal comments for you.
Okay.
Motion open.
Motion by Duff?
Second.
Second by O'Brien. All in favor? Aye. Close, motion carries. Yes, sir.
Okay, stun one, Mike. Just explain to you guys why I have the same situation in front of our parcel, two hundred and three twenty-five Wolverine Drive. Um, sump pumps are running there, it's Paul and Steve. Um, I think it's just bad, worse than any other place in the subdivision. I would have liked to enclose the pipe or enclose the ditch also. Um, but there's, as Mike says, there's a lot of the utilities there, it's a water main now, there's all this. Me digging that and stuff, I, shouldn't be my responsibility, should be the village, should be you guys own the road and the roadway. I, with Mike saying that it, it goes, or east from Wolverine Drive, the water's flowing there, it's coming from the north, water's not going from the north. It's ending at my neighbor's house, um, and in my ditch. It's always been full of water this whole summer. Um, it's kind of frustrating, because you can't do nothing with the ditch, you can't cut it, you can't do anything with it. It needs some attention. Like, like I said, it was forty years that you guys are, neglected these ditches for being maintenance. It's kind of tough, when you're developing a site, and then you can't do nothing with that area, because there's, there's not much I can do. It's up to you guys to, to do something, to come up with an answer, that we can come up with an answer. I'm willing to buy the pipe, or that, my ditch in front of my house, but you guys, I'd like to see you guys install it. Um, that's an option with me. But it's, it's all, you know, and I don't, it's kind of puzzling, too, you guys who paid for roads last year, and they have to place a culvert like that. This situation wouldn't be here as bad as it is now. Um, yeah, I'd like to hear, you know, have anybody gone from the council? Because last week or last month, Ryan, you said that was the first you'd heard of this. Um, I got an email from Dave going back to May. I've talked to Mike since last year about the situation, since I started developing. I set two set of plans in with Mike, and we can't come up with an answer on the pipe coverage and this and that. Even what Mike's proposing to you today is not, he doesn't have the coverage that he wants me to have on the pipe that I proposed on. Um, I was just to connect point invert, point A to point B, straight line it, which is, to me, is the best option, because it's going to, you know, I'm taking the water from the north, you know, I would take the water from the west, go east, and north to south. That would eliminate the whole corner area and extend it. You know, I hope you guys would consider extending this ditch enclosure between Penny Lake and, yeah, Penny Lake and Adrian, because there's also houses on there. His, his has been running for two doors down from the unit. Um, his sump pump ran forever, I mean, for years and years and years, and it still does. And that's what we have. Our, the, the new development, mine, that house, it's pumping water. I did water on the bottom, and I had to raise the house two feet and put, do all kinds of engineering on the, on the basement to stabilize the ground, to put the basement in. Um, and I'm, I can pump water. I can pump a lot of water if I really want it. But I'm raising, I'm playing with my sump pump to try and control that, so I'm not pumping as much and keep it, I know where my water table is, it's about eight inches below the top of my crack, but if I don't pump water, I can go, this summer, I went almost two months without running the sump pump at all, and then I cressed my crack, and then I've been pumping it out since. It runs every, I don't know, minute I'm pumping.
Yeah, my, my in-laws have the same thing over in Brushwood.
But we, I mean, and Phil is pumping a lot of water also. His pipe, um, his sump pump is under the ground, it's girdling, because it has nowhere to go. The ditch, the sedimentation in the last fifty years, it's raised over a foot, I would say, a sediment, from the bottom of ditch when it was originally dug until now. I bet you, the elevation has risen at least a foot if not. I don't know if you can verify that from the...
I, I can't.
Is there ad fills from the subdivision in the, when they originally built it?
No.
With inert elevations?
Nothing.
So, you know, it'd be nice to get the plans, the original plans of the subdivision, to see what goes there. But, and again, I'm a surveyor, and I'm willing to donate any of my time and my knowledge to help this project work too. Um, so I guess that's all I got to say.
Okay. Andy, any comments from your side at this point? I mean, knowing that, you've been dealing with it too.
Yeah, you have.
Yep, I have, and it's a deep subject. Uh, you know, I think there's, there's a lot of variables. I'm not sure how far I want to go into it right now at this point. Um, I haven't actually seen the drawings for the, from Mike yet, to see the structure. I, he and I have discussed it, and, uh, I've got some, you know, ideas on how it's going to be.
I know you know where, what you're dealing with too.
I, I think Neil's, uh, being very objective in saying that he'd be, because I understand where he and Phil both have that water flow going through there. Appreciate the offers of saying, hey, you know, at least let me purchase the pipe so, because he does have a tremendous water flow from those residents going that way. And I think he's actually one house farther, um, north of you. Though that, that has a lot that actually tends to go, sit in the ditch or just, I don't think it would go that direction. Um, but then you're starting to open up a whole another project of saying, well, you know, if we're going to enclose everybody's ditch line all the way up Wolverine Drive on that one side, that, that opens up a totally different project if we're going to look to go the whole direction. Um, again, I think it's a, a great offer to say, you know, the, the working offer, you know, um, but I'm not sure how far, I can't step in much farther than that as far as...
Yeah.
There is water flow there, needed, uh, it needs to be directed in some way.
Okay. Anybody, any questions at this point, counsel?
Mike, I guess just from an engineering standpoint, is there a reason that, um, you weren't including the stretch from Adrian down to Penny Lake in front of Mr. Tannenbacher's property and Phil's property, in, in terms of your recommendations here?
Uh, yes, there definitely is. Um, each of the sections that I have proposed enclosing pick up a large amount of water. It's a, it's a convection point of, uh, convection where a number of spots all come together, so carrying more water than just a single ditch line down in front of somebody's home. Um, there is a, so, so I, we tried to take care of the water that is constantly flowing, which virtually never dries up in order to carry, in order to put the pipe in. That's number one. Number two is a, um, maybe a little bit more of a, I'm going to say a political decision by council, because there are definitely, uh, other areas in the same subdivision that have, quite frankly, deeper ditches than these that have flowing water as well. And if you start extending, um, enclosing ditches, where do you stop that? Um, and the next person that would be in here would be the next one upstream from that, and then the next one upstream from that. And so there, there has to be a point in time when you say, okay, we've taken care of the, uh, really rough sections of the water problems that have been bothering DPW for, for decades. Um, the other sections have to be done on a individual basis by the homeowner. We have a standard detail here in the village that council has adopted to allow people to enclose their ditch lines. Most of the time, it's enclosed just because people are sick and tired of mowing their, uh, their ditch line. So they put a pipe in the ground, and they open it on both sides, and they're able then just to mow over top of the pipe, and, um, there are a number of those around. As a matter of fact, Mr. Tannenbacher is, uh, did that himself on his existing home across the street. He, he paid for that himself, he installed it, we inspected it, and he now doesn't have a ditch on his existing home. Um, so there might be a solution that is available to council, and council's very much aware of how we use special assessment districts. We do that with sanitary sewer, water main, in public type, uh, uh, project. Uh, some communities use special assessments for paving roadways as well. Um, so if we were going to get into a project to solve all the drainage problems in the subdivision, then I might suggest council consider, uh, studying the idea of a special assessment district, because you've got, Andy knows better than me, you've probably got twenty homes that would be in here saying, I want the water out of my ditch line. And, uh, and that would be the proper way to deal with it on more wholesale basis. And, um, and that would be the proper way to deal with it on more wholesale basis.
That was my next question, if we could fund this off in total or in part by way of a special assessment district? If there are that many properties in that part of the village that would benefit from this kind of improvement?
There are, and we've been in touch with a number of them and, uh, we've actually gone out and met with them and when they understand the process, they say, it's too big a job. There are some of them that are just too big a job for the homeowner to deal with and so they just, if you've been down there, you've seen people that have actually lined their ditch with, uh, locks with the top cut off so they actually created a concrete channel down in the bottom of the ditch line that carries their flowing water. It solves their water problem, they don't have water sitting in the bottom of their ditch, but they can't mow their ditch, their ditch line, they have to constantly just hand whack it instead of a mow.
Do you have any idea, Mike, like, so are we talking one, two, three, four, five?
Yeah, we're talking about five homes in just that one stretch.
Do you know what that...
And if you come back into the subdivision, uh, as I said, there's probably, and there's a good twenty homes back in there that have flowing water flooding their ditch lines constantly.
That'd be concerning.
Yeah.
But it, it, it makes a little sense at least to be thinking about this because you're doing it on both sides. Uh, is there a way to, to figure out what that would cost?
Certainly there is. I mean, we could go through and Andy and I could decide in our own judgment which homes might have the best end product by including the ditch line. And, but we'd have to have some stipulation, are we just looking for the water problem? Or we could allow the people to enclose ditch just to eliminate the hassle of mowing the ditch line? Everyone would like to have a flat yard, like in the village with open ditches. Now, people say, what about my subdivision? And you eliminated the open ditches in this subdivision, what about my subdivision?
Yeah, no, I, I, I hear you, but, I mean, open water also is a big breeding ground for mosquitoes.
It is, and...
And they're getting huge. Have you seen the big ones?
Yes, I spotted them off many times. So that would be certainly one of the stipulations that we could use. If there's standing water or flowing water in the ditch line, we could, uh, count those up and bring that count back.
I guess, uh, does anybody know how the rest of the residents in that area, how they feel about, you know, moving ahead with a larger project?
The people that don't have the water problem don't see...
Don't have a problem.
My ditch is dry, but they don't want to see their ditch dug out either. If a special assessment comes, would this include all this project too? All these people that have to, uh, do their assessment on their ditch or they're automatically against grandfathered and they don't have to pay, uh, pay construction jobs?
I guess, right now, we don't really have or even have... I have an idea, yeah.
And then my main concern is, it's not so much, I don't really care...
Could you say your name, name of the address?
Uh, Bill Dixon, man, 357 Wolverine Drive. My main concern isn't cutting the grass, it's the staining water. Uh, rough, dirty math, it's probably about three thousand gallons a day that some pump pumps out, so.
Okay. Anybody have any ideas? Which one you want to look at?
Well, in my opinion, Mr. President, is that, I mean, all of a sudden we've turned, well, somewhat of a planned project into a very grandiose thing that would never happen in this season. You know, we can still put together an SAD and enclose all these ditches in, in this time of year. What we do have, something major to address, is a sinkhole that was created by our last, uh, great storms that we had on Adrian. There's a sinkhole actually in the, in the pavement that we do need to move forward with for winter somehow to address this. If it's just the minimum of replacing the culvert underneath Adrian and leaving the rest of the ditch line open, well then, so, so be it. That's a bare minimum of a need of a project.
Right.
Um, I would suggest at least moving forward with, from Penny Lake at Wolverine Drive down towards the Greenaway Drain, um, it's been an open ditch line for, you know, I think it'll be coming up a year this spring, uh, that we had to cut that just to get, create actually more flow from the ditch line from Wolverine Drive, the three...
What's your...
Uh, 325, going that direction, which is minimally flows, but it does flow. Um, I think we need to at least start with what Mike's plan is, as, instead of trying to take care of the whole subdivision is a, is a whole nother scheme of things there. That's, that's a whole nother budget year.
To, to kind of supplement that a little bit, these two projects can be standalone projects. The, the concept here is to get the pipe low enough to be able to extend them in the future if we wanted to. So these two pipes are kind of a standalone project and can be expanded from where we would be leaving these pipes ended. Um, and then we can also, Andy and I can look at the rest of the subdivision and come up with a count and a, and a cost estimate for the rest of the subdivision where we have water problems.
All right. Do you have any, uh, idea which way we want to proceed?
This, this project would be a good jumping off point, that at least then you have a path for drainage. It may start minimally alleviating some of the issues that those folks are having, but I think you need some, some type of jumping off point and if we can get this done this year, it's a good start.
Mm-hmm. Well, it makes sense to do it if we're gonna be messing around with the culvert anyways at this point, at least up by Adrian.
Can you at least add on regrading the ditch so it does flow from the north to the south to that corner? Because I'm worried about his sub-pump, he's gonna flood this morning.
Uh, you don't...
Because if that ditch freezes and then that, his sub-pump can't girdle any water out because it's frozen solid, his, his sub-pump's not, this is gonna blow in his basement.
I think that definitely open cutting the ditch line in itself would, uh...
Would eliminate that.
Would be helpful, yes.
And Andy, my house hasn't done yet, so if my basement floods, I'm not gonna lose nothing, it's just gonna be some water down there and I'll just pump it out. But, in the future, you've got a lot to lose.
Man, that sounds like that might be part of a solution, huh?
Yeah, you gotta start somewhere.
Yeah.
And when nothing's not the solution, so, we start with the intention of looking into the rest of it, then we start it. And if you do nothing, it's just gonna make it worse.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I drove through after a couple of storms, there's just, there is water everywhere. And to Mr. Watermaker's, Dr. Tenenbacher's concerns, it's pretty evident that if you keep doing it, like you said, there's just, you can't get in there, it's filled. And the same thing on Penny Lake and it was the same thing over here Adrian. And so, and now with Adrian being in the condition it's in, as Andy said, that's definitely something we have to do now. You can't sit on that and my bigger concern is, is there anywhere else in these areas that might end up lucky with Adrian in the future? And then how much time is our DPW committing every week, every month to these kinds of spaces that if we start putting in this, this kind of work at these two spots, might alleviate their time for those jobs and they can work on other ditches and improving those situations further because they won't have so much time on these major spots.
So, uh, Andy, you said, I have the term correctly, cutting the ditches, is that what you said?
Yeah, we just basically reditch, open, open cut and make sure there's proper grade.
Something our DPW can do?
Yes.
What kind of timeframe would it take to do that?
That's half a day.
Okay, so would that be something we'd do after the drains are put in or is it something sooner?
During. We could probably do it sooner, um, to get a proper grade established on that ditch line and then, then everything's gonna be, would flow from down there from, from the contract.
Yeah, uh, to answer your question specifically, remember that when we propose to put this pipe in, it's gonna be at a lower elevation than the bottom of the ditch and the culverts that are going underneath the road now. So it's best to put the pipe in and then he has something to ditch to. Otherwise, the ditch is gonna be lower than the outlet for the pipe as it currently exists.
So we'd have to wait then?
Have to wait, that's, we, my, be my recommendation, yeah.
Why don't you sort of lay that out?
Well, because if we don't have a pipe low enough to drain the ditch, now we've created a swimming pool and a ditch line that's lower than the pipe can carry.
You've got proposed grades.
But the pipe's not in yet, so, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? We have, and I, which way to go? I mean, I, it, it makes sense to at least get something done. And I guess if residents did want to possibly pitch in, I mean, that might be an avenue too.
Well, maybe what we could do is start with...
Yeah, in front of their house or something.
Yeah, start with this and then could, uh, could we send out a, a letter or, um, to all these residents here and see if they would be willing? You know, if we would do some preliminary studies, are they interested in paying for a pipe? You know, just to kind of get a, an idea of how many people really want to spend the money or really care about it?
I think we'd have to have an idea as to how much money we're talking about.
We could do it elsewhere.
It's probably something better for next year since it couldn't be done this year anyway, there's no sense in bringing that, bringing that up now and then saying, well, we have to wait till next year because we don't have...
Yeah, I, from what I'm hearing, you have to have the pipeline because it has to have some flow path to it.
Right, right.
So, wanted to look at that done first.
I agree with that.
Design my driveway to propose elevations or will I go from the top of the ditch that's got all kinds of erosion in it already or sediment in it already?
If council approves this, you and I can work together to set your culverts, I mean, set your, uh, your, your driveways. The problem, of course, is if you're gonna put a pipe in sometime in the near future, we don't want to be digging your driveway, brandy driveway out and then rebuild it.
I agree. Two pipes only being put in are gonna be on any of the ground. They're not gonna be exposed.
We can put temporary culverts in that allow you to get access to your, uh, your house until council decides to expand the project.
So I'll have a, I'll go concrete so far and leave, from the right of way to the edge of pavement, I'll have to leave it gravel till this gets settled.
Yes, that's what my recommendation would be, uh, yes.
I'm in for that then.
Okay. Okay. And if it, that, at this point, I mean, if he wanted to pay for, put the pipe in in front of his house, I mean, would that be something that you'd be able to look at having contractor do while insertion it out?
Unfortunately, that, that contractor, there's two ways to do it. The village does not have a process to where we can mix private and public funds. Um, we will be proposing to put the new pipe in about a foot and a half to two feet lower than the existing pipe underneath the road, so it, it provides the depth to be able to pick everyone up. Until council, however, addresses the neighbors and the surrounding community, um, it would not be wise for Mr. Neil, Neil Tenenbacher to put a pipe in because if we're gonna extend that pipe further than what we're anticipating or just his property, then it has to be down low enough to be able to extend far enough in each direction. So, uh, until council addresses maybe a bigger issue, we need to just put this in and then we can proceed because if we're not going any further than, uh, Mr. Tenenbacher's property, then we can just put it down a foot. We're gonna go three hundred feet further, now we have to put that pipe low enough to be able to extend that pipe and enclose other people's property that's further away. So, um, I'm gonna suggest that if council likes, we can just handle this project and then when, um, Andy and I come back with numbers and maybe a number of homes and things like that, council can decide whether to expand that project and then they'll know how to, how to put everybody's ditches in properly.
Do you have one more comment?
Sure. Okay. If Mike designs all this and he comes up with a design and you include all the houses and Pam mentioned that you could go to all the neighbors and talk about it, he can have proposed elevations for every driveway and if somebody replaces a driveway at that time, you already pre-know what you want to put that culvert pipe at with how Mike's gonna design this. So every pipe is going north and west is gonna flow at the slope that you, that is desired. And if they choose not to do the pipe or choose not that, you know where the problems are because you'll know what pipes have been replaced where and, you know, at different spots. Even if we can go get some of the residents, some of them that are dry, they might stay dry, but the wet spots, we can get out of there. And you have a proposed elevation and somebody comes five years from now and says, I want to put a culvert in, I'm putting a new driveway in. Well, when you put it in, this is what we want your two pipes at, the two ends. And that would be in the future, that the village could help improve our village and come up with an idea and it could be within time too.
Okay. Comments, Mike?
No, I, he stated it very well. There's a lot of planning that needs to be done and an awfully lot of, um, uh, information that council needs to make, uh, any future decisions.
Okay. Any other motion?
We'll make a motion.
Forward with the bidding process?
The bidding process, yeah.
For both, both, uh...
Yeah, both.
Both parts of the project?
Second.
Motion by Duff, second by O'Brien. Any other discussion? On favor?
I was gonna say, and then the understanding is that if we decide to move ahead with these projects, then we're gonna be asking the DPW to cut the ditch line along with the, the other two projects.
After, after they're complete, after they're installed.
Right.
Okay. Uh, let's do a real call, I guess.
Mesiro?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Kaznakie?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And then motion to close to the public.
Okay, motion, Duff to close to the public. Second by O'Brien, on favor.
The next item was the crack ceiling. And as council knows, every year we enter into a contract for, for sealing the cracks that develop in our, in our roadway system. And that prevents, as explained in the past, it prevents water from intruding down underneath the pavement and prevents dislodge speed that develops and breaks up our roadway. And this has been an extremely positive project. Every year we have a, um, major minor load fund for the crack ceiling project. ANR Seal Coating has been our contractor of record for the last ten to fifteen years. They have, every time we've gone up a public bid, they've cut the other contractors in half, given the prices in half. Uh, this year, I'm asking council to, to realize that they did provide for us a great quote last year. They called and said that they would, um, maintain their same costs that they did last year. Uh, that prevents us from having to spend money creating specifications going off of bids, advertising, all that. Uh, if we just authorize them to, um, maintain their same prices that they did for last year and, uh, we can have them, they like to do the crack ceiling the first week of November and this will get us on their schedule and council's agreement. This is within budgeted funds.
Motion to approve the crack ceiling at the same price paid last year, which was six cents per linear foot.
For ANR seal coating.
ANR T code seal.
Uh, budgeted funds. Motion by Duff, second by Kaznakie. Any other discussion?
Just is there a, a minimum amount of feet that they're gonna do or a maximum?
Uh, we've worked very carefully with them and, uh, normally happens is they know that tar desired to, um, fill every crack in every road. There are roads that are alligator and you'd end up spreading tar over the whole thing. So we don't do those and, and we don't do the roads that are anticipated to be repaved next year if that's a waste of money. So they do the entire village and they normally spend more money than we have budgeted, but they know the budget amount and with the quality of the company, they then back their prices right down to our budgeted amount. So they are a... prices right down to our budgeted amount. So they are a great company and works with the village very well along that line.
How much did we get covered last year?
All the way around. Uh, this year due to somebody living on Tampa, this year we started on Tampa instead of ending on Tampa. And, um, but they are, they start in a spot that I give them, they go clockwise or counterclockwise around the village and they do the entire village, all the major cracks on the road. So we try to hit every single road.
And that is their priority to new roads?
Uh, thank you. Uh, we always have them do the new roads first. Uh, they have the fewest cracks, but they do the newest roads first, the more valuable roadway. And as they go around the village, uh, we hit the, uh, the older roads. Uh, last year, if you recall, we did the southern part of the village. So that whole subdivision will be, will be done and we will walk and make sure that they've done the cracking, crack ceiling, and then they'll work from there and work clockwise around the village from there.
All right. Got a motion, a second?
Just wanted to comment too. Um, the county does have a local road improvement program and, uh, we have used funds from that county program to help support the crack ceiling in the past. And this is unlike a lot of the county programs where you get reimbursed after the work is done. This is one where you're eligible to make the application upfront and get the funding and then just document the fact that you've had the work done in the past. So we already have, and I don't remember the amount of money, maybe four or five thousand dollars, something like that, we've gotten for the county specifically for this program in the bank right now.
Oh, great.
Good. All right. That. Roll call though, please.
Doc?
Yeah.
Kaznacki?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, council. I just, council, any other questions? Thank you. Yes.
Um, Mike, you and I traded some emails late this afternoon. Um, you have presented some conceptual drawings or I guess some rough engineering drawings to the Parks and Recreation Board regarding the BMX track.
That's correct.
Out at Claire Miller Park. It's my understanding that the Parks and Rec Board would like to see some further engineering done on those. Um, that's going to involve some more effort on your parks and more expense. So I guess if I could, I would ask that if council is in favor of having Mike's office do further engineering, that we get a motion to that effect. That way the expenses, uh, will be covered going forward.
So the intent is to not do a set of drawings that you can go out for a formal bid on, but at least drawings that I can submit to earthwork contractors and get a ballpark budget so that we can bring back to you, with the council. And as part of that, what we might do is work with Parks and Rec, um, and actually put some staking in the ground in the area of where that cap might be proposed, uh, and as guided by the Park and Rec Committee, uh, so that council can walk it as well as, uh, give some estimates for making that happen, making the project real.
Okay.
Motion, uh-
What?
Chair called, good draw, but, uh, bids for-
Two estimates?
Estimates.
Yeah, that's good. Second by Jeremy. From a, it'll take 2,000 hours or anything like that.
No, I, I was even thinking, uh, time and material not to exceed a thousand dollars is, is what's in my mind. Uh, so, uh, yeah.
Sure.
All right. Any other discussion? Roll call though, please.
Kaznacki?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Macat?
Yes.
Nedro?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay. We have no public hearing. So we are moving on to, this is item 12A, Parks and Rec Board Recommendation, Request Council Approve Chair's Eagle Scout Project as Presented. He kind of talked about this.
Yeah, council, in some ways, this is a little bit of a formality in the sense that, um, that, um, Mr. Scharr was anxious to get going on this and he still has several steps that he has to go through with the Boy Scouts to get the, uh, the Eagle Scout Project approved. So based upon the feedback that, uh, we had gotten from the Parks and Recreation Board for their, his drawings, I went ahead and gave preliminary authorization on behalf of the village so he could move forward with the Eagle Scout process. So, um, this is really probably don't suspenders, but if council wants to go ahead and bless the, uh, the project to be as presented, and I left a copy of his plans at the table for you tonight. I don't think there's a downside to that.
We approve Michael Scharr's Eagle Scout Project as presented.
Second. Motion by Duff, second by Jeremy. Any discussion? I think it's great. The project.
Jeremy started collecting cans at the corn roast. So he, uh, constructed the caps for the, uh, waste bins, uh, like cans, I think we were talking about the last year. So that, uh, it worked out really well, so.
Perfect.
Okay. On favor?
Aye.
Close.
Thank you.
Uh, next is Beautification Committee Recommendations. Uh, Request Council Release Budgeted Funds for Purchase of All Decorations Not to Exceed 200 Bucks.
Motion.
Motion by Duff, second by the bill. Um, any discussion on that? Okay. Uh, roll call.
Jeremy?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Macat?
Yes.
Nedro?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
Yes.
And secondly, Beautification Request Council Release Budgeted Funds for Purchase Patriotic Decorations for Future Holidays Not to Exceed a Couple Hundred Bucks. And the thought there, I know is because of the, they're, they're on sale right now, peeing off before the July. So I thought that would be a good, good time to get them, so.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Duff, second by-
Kaznacki.
Jeremy. Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Uh, O'Brien?
Yes.
Macat?
Yes.
Nedro?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
Kaznacki?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to chickens. Chicken backyard foul subcommittee recommendations. Foul Subcommittee. So I guess Davey, you want to kick it off?
So the, uh, Subcommittee that council informed back in April, um, met three times to discuss, uh, possible regulations regarding chickens, ducks, quails and other backyard foul. Um, I think the consensus of the group was that they wanted to go ahead and, and draft, um, some general guidelines or outline some regulations that if council was to move forward, that those are the type of regulations that, um, they felt would be appropriate. So I know that, uh, Councilman Duff, Councilman Jeremy, Councilman O'Neal, we're on the committee. In addition, Taylor Prashet, who was on the committee, is here. Jennifer Wright is on the committee, is here. Um, as I indicated in the cover memo, Taylor had, had volunteered and then had prepared an outline of the talking points or ordinance points, um, that, that evolved over the three committee meetings. Uh, there was a subsequent email that also came from Christine Nedro, who was the alternate, um, addressing some other issues that, that she thought should be discussed. Um, that email was at the table for you tonight. Um, Taylor is here tonight if you have questions for him about, um, his outline or if you'd like him to go over that. Otherwise, I guess at this point, we're looking for direction from council if this is something that council wants to pursue. And I think the appropriate action would be to refer the issue to the village attorney's office, have the attorney start to draft some kind of an ordinance for formal consideration by council down the road.
I think a motion to open, so if you can, if I can go over a little bit.
Okay. Motion by Duff, second by Jeremy. Discussion, on favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Okay. Just Prashet.
So we have a basic seal. Uh, so if you have one, can I like read through it, run through it, or does anyone have specific questions first?
I think you probably just give us a good overview.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. So, uh, initially, we decided that to start with, we would limit the permits for backyard fouls for 12 to start. And then from there, um, increase in future, if not keep it the same or do some. We were thinking about permit costs. The goal was to be to keep it net negative for the village. So initially, we were thinking around a hundred dollars for the official permit. And that would include, uh, any building inspections, site plans, uh, to have someone go out there and just double check that, like, you only have one kind of bird or you only have one kind of duck. And then the, uh, initial permit, that's kind of all included with one fee to be able to do all those things. Um, and then the renewal for the next year, if you decide to keep going, would be, um, subsequently a lot less. So we were thinking like 35 to, I think $50 or something like that, uh, for every year. And then it includes one inspection. Someone comes out, takes a look, okay, it doesn't look like garbage. You have cars, you have red one birds, you're not, uh, you're not, you can keep doing it. As for zoning, uh, no ducks, chickens, quails are, $50 are allowed on the same properties. Uh, zoning properties will be the R1, R1B homes, which would be the single family residences in the, in the neighborhood if they, uh, can, need setbacks and-
Placement regulation.
So we didn't really go deep down into like what is going to be required for someone taking care of a duck or chicken. So that's going to be up to the person doing it. But to put it in there, the Michigan has the, uh, generally accepted agricultural management practices, move just the, so like that. So you got to try to follow this to the best of your ability. And that would, that runs on everything, like, uh, vaccinations, how big to make your pens, um, feeding, carrying, kind of event. We're pretty much covering everything for care of, uh, the fowl. Um, something that you talk about is that we want with the bigger, uh, the square footage per, uh, animal. Uh, so ducks require a little bit more space or more square footage, coop space for ducks, two square foot of space for chickens. And then, you know, we kind of talked about the kind of, we want all food separate from, um, stored separately from the fowl in some sort of lock-in or air tight container, just to decrease, um, footprint and whatever you can. So that would be something that had to have that and show when I did the inspection lessons or really the logs and twists and stuff. Number, so we kind of kept it at five for now. Uh, so five of one type. So it would be like five chickens or five ducks. There was kind of back and forth on whether we should do like two ducks, three chickens, vice versa. So we just decided like, you know, if you're going to do it, you're going to pick one or the other. And then you're going to have at least two, no more than five. Because we don't want someone to get just one animal and then they fail because taking care of ducks and chickens, they want to be together. So you need at least two of them to be together so that they have more blood to, to, not too much. So there's a recommendation and I have that, that initial that this idea is requiring, um, you know, birds deworming, parasites, stuff like that, so that people aren't doing like, you know, packing and stuff that are from these birds. Uh, but then, you know, annual checkups would be recommended, but not required. But it does kind of like go more like the Michigan general, picking up rules. They recommend that you do it, but it's like, you have to do it every year. At least on a small scale. On a bigger scale, you have different regulations, but 400. Housing of birds. So whatever, however many birds you have, however many keepers, has to be 10 feet away from any property line, 20 feet away from any neighborhood or neighboring residence. So, uh, you know, where they live, we need not necessarily like their garage. If there's a garage in the backyard, it doesn't have to be 20 feet away from their garage because they're on your property line. Coop should be more than 6 feet high. That way, like your privacy fence, you can coop your backyard and no one can see it towering above the rest of the, the two-story chicken groups. Solid flooring is recommended with some sort of like rubber, rubber mat, metal flooring to be on the bed. That way, it, it's a recommendation, not a requirement. Uh, we do recommend that they weld the wire content when, uh, making these coops, the coops that come off the internet tend to have a lower gauge wire, uh, which will make it easier for predators in the coops. So we require the coops to have a heavier gauge wire. It increases the animals getting in there. So we don't have a food source for the raccoon and the pet that is represented out. Uh, so we would require that, um, whenever cooing you buy is going to tend to have to have some sort of modifications in order to meet the qualifications that we're setting for housing of birds. We were kind of leaning more towards coops that are elevated off the ground. Now, these coops would be able to be moved around the yard, but because the birds are elevated off the ground, they're easy to use as food, rats and other vermin would be harder for them to get to it. If you do want to have a stationary coop, then I don't think I put it in there, but we recommended, oh, yeah, that you have a, a buried, like, deterrent. So like buried wire or something, uh, buried down on the ground, go back, animals from taking them in. That's if you want to have a permanent run. Obviously, we don't want people lying off of their backyards and building coops out of like, uh, pallets and whatever they find in industrial blocks. So, you know, have that, like, I just decided to be easy, uh, look at them so that it's not bothering neighbors. It's, it looks nice. It's not an eyesore. It's not falling apart as we can. Only thing we're talking about is the village, they retain the right to reject permits or take away permits that, you know, they have too many legitimate complaints. When I'm talking about neighbors who just don't want it and everything, the people that are taking care of their, uh, their situation, or if they're too busy just running or, you know, the village or some sort of, unless you're not experienced, we don't want to do it between the two. So, but then for the yearly inspection, you kind of make that decision. Whoever goes and expects can make that decision. So we talked about what chickens and ducks to allow and it kind of came down to it needs to be, you know, flatless birds, kind of breed that you want. But we did have a list of recommended birds, which tend to be quieter birds. Now, chicken breeds, these, the ones that I have listed on the report, are, tend to be the quieter breeds. Uh, ducks are considered more quiet than chickens, but we do have a list of, of ducks that are considered to be more quiet, um, ducks. And then by noise levels, the average chicken would not land. Their average, um, noise level is about 60. That's what would be in this conversation. Keep talking to you. If we were in my backyard, my neighbors wouldn't necessarily be able to hear what I'm saying right now, you know? And that's what we thought would be nice because like, if you have it over here in the spot, which may be a different spot in the yard, then one may like their response in the yard and the chickens, you know, digging on their, their yard, but you can't bother this. I tried to put, is there anything else I can remember from the council meeting here? There was some other stuff we talked about. Uh, do you have any questions?
I believe one of the bigger ones, we were going to allow roosters or drakes.
Yes. So no magic, so no, you know, crawling, you know, there's people that allow ours. So only female birds. The whole reason for this is because, you know, we want like feedings for the company of the chickens. So that's what we do.
Art, you have any other comments? You're a sub, you're a chair of the subcommittee.
Yeah, I mean, we also covered the, we were not going to allow these areas for slaughter. Uh, no commercial sales were going to be allowed. Um, that's about it. I think it's, I think you've got a lot of good information.
Got Jennifer here also. Anything to add, Jennifer?
The council really tried to be comprehensive, really considering everything, what could be concerns for residents and realistic and, um, still eye appealing standards for the village. And I think that we did a really great job coming together to really evaluate what makes sense as far as, is this a great idea? And so this is how we're going to do
Yeah, I think, I want to, I think all, all the meetings, I'll tell you the truth. I was, there wasn't that many people that did come, but, uh, the subcommittee did really- was, there wasn't that many people that did come, but the subcommittee did really do a nice job of trying to include everything. They had a lot of good discussion and pretty much threw everything. It was great, great process.
Question, if they, do they die often? And if so, then you're going to be replacing them, so do they need a vet? Or how would you want that addressed if you're getting replacements within that permitting period, so to speak?
The veterinary care for chickens is rather minimal. You just give them worms on yourself, they don't really need vaccinations. If they get sick, you need veterinary care, it's only antibiotics or something like that. The biggest concern that in this area people would have is there's not that many veterinary centers for chickens. So they may have to travel, you know, to the west side of the state or considerably more.
We have one, there's one in Wailo that does treat ducks and chickens. So that would be the closest one, that would be the only one. We have someone in the area.
I guess I'm just thinking to put a provision in there or something in the actual ordinance to keep the number of fowl, you know, uniform, I guess. Or what if they, no more than five, but you need at least two? So what if someone starts out with two? And then what do they do if they want to raise it to five during their permitting period? Do they, would you want them to come back to the village or could they just add up to five?
Can you add up to five? So like you started with two, and you get the permit, but they're like, I really love this, you can't go more than five.
Okay. But it just, of course, being the same species then as well, or like duck or chicken? Okay.
And that's something you can start with, but then if you want to change it and all the mixed stuffs. But I mean, it's kind of approval, is to have like all of those machines.
We don't want to have an idea to approve a bunch of different stuff that become very overwhelmed with advantage and see what's working and what's not. There's the housing for, what ducks need is slightly different than what chickens need. So if people were involved, then it would be two separate areas, and I was kind of concerned we were trying to really make sure like, it's what we're approving, we're looking into, being considered to be approved as a manageable place to start and not approve for all crazy things to look at and manage and assess.
And the whole thought, I think, was if the village was to look at approving something like this, it would be, it would be allowable, but it would be restricted.
And it's only allowable.
Limited their number of applicants for the first year, just to see how it goes. If it'd be manageable to round up ten people, we'll be at least as not working, other than doing, you know, as many as we could.
Who are you anticipating being the inspector? When you talk about, you know, having the inspection, building inspection, so I guess just be the building.
Building inspector. We didn't know costs, really off the top of our heads, so we were just trying to figure out like, how much would it cost to pay them to have them come out and do a permit or something? But include that in.
Build into the fee structure.
For all the birds.
Formulating structure.
And then you talk about fowl inspection included with that, would that just be, they could count the number, the building inspector would count the number?
The thing would be, you would have to submit your plan, you would have to build, build it, they come out, they look at it, and they go tables, they change the wire, it's in the appropriate spot. And then you did the birds, and at some point, they hear they come out and they're like, all right, but the coop's still good. But I mean, the follow-up inspection, like later years, you know, you don't have the same coop for seven years and it's falling apart. If people really want to do this, and they expect that to happen, they'll make a plan for people who, not a win, want to do it. And then the next year, it's not so good.
Takes sense. Both the sense games.
Any other questions?
We're also going to include quail as a possibility. There's a whole different set of structures for quails. Birds are this big. Five quails.
So no quail?
I think we did.
No, I think you did allow them.
Oh, they are, oh.
We did touch on the housing and stuff like that, because it's significantly different from ducks and chickens.
It's like a rabbit.
In space and house size and what it was like. Quails require a flying area, so you have to have an enclosed coop where they're like two feet high, where they can actually fly, because they're flying birds, so.
Even some of the chickens, too. I think that was what was included in two, wasn't it? Have a fence in here.
You have to have a fence in there.
Yeah.
So if you want, kind of like if you want to have a pool, you have to have a fence. If you want a chicken, you have to have a consistent fence.
That way, they're not, they're not wandering into the neighbors or, or, or clobbered up. So they, the world won't wander, if they have their little, we can trim their flight feathers so they can't get forward.
Anybody else have any questions?
Not to get too picky here, then, just one quick thing, then if it says coops no more than six feet in height, but do they have to be higher for a quail then to fly?
No, quails are, well, in quail, we're kind of looking at that, but quails require a flight run. And it has to be no more than two feet high, because if they fly higher than that, they hit the top and.
Oh.
But, you know, they're much smaller, so their housing is a lot smaller. It's just a bunch of different requirements. I mean, I came for ducks, she came for chickens, we just kind of on that. And the quails were brought up, and we're like, that's why too. If someone comes and says they want quail, we can add a section to that as well.
Okay.
So I think probably the way you want to state it is that the coops could be no higher than six feet or lower, you know, or something to that effect. Because you don't want it to be, you don't want to have a six-foot coop and then have them put two or three feet in the air.
Yeah. But we specifically decided we wanted them elevated off of the ground.
Right. But you also want it six feet or below.
Yep.
Just so people that come would like, you know.
Yeah, ten foot tall, ten foot tall.
Turn the kids' play structure.
Right. Sounds that up pretty good.
Yeah.
So what's council, what's council feel?
The most part. Yeah. I'd make the motion to send this over to our attorneys to draft something.
I second it.
Okay, motion made up, second by Cas Nicky.
With the idea, but then to bring it back through the subcommittee, then after we have a draft of an ordinance, I think that makes sense.
Okay. Let's do a roll call.
Next up?
Yes.
Pedro?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Cas Nicky?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
All right. Good job.
Can you state your name and address?
Yeah.
Right, two five five.
And thank everybody on the, on the subcommittee that put a lot of hard work into it, including the undertaker.
He had the easy, Jim.
It was awful hard to come, I don't know, what was it, Thursday night?
Thursday.
I'm sorry, during three months during the summer to come and talk about birds down here.
But hey, we learned a lot.
Yeah. All right. Moving on. Back to my agenda here. So, request from DPDW leader Stone to purchase a new Kubota four-wheel tractor for an amount not to exceed seventy-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. Thanks, Taylor.
Evening, Colonel.
Hi.
Evening.
Just to clean out the ditch.
Yeah, we have here the Kubota tractor. It really seems really good. It includes the front loader bucket forks and the flip mower attachment. We utilized the oil mower attachment first, and honestly, we did have a little bit of an issue with that particular impound. Within the first ten hours, you seen that. In two days, there was some twist to it. We notified the boy guards, it's the carrier of the whole deal. The builder of the flip mower was very interested, they wanted to see it. So they have come and got the flip mower, and they wanted to inspect. I assured them that our operators have, you know, over twenty-two years of experience. It wasn't, we didn't telephone call, you know, and say, oh, what's up with this? You know, there's something going on with that. But we did finish our boy, it was operational, it wasn't a fit, full failure. But they wanted to take it and see, see what's going on. So, heard that everything's been, been fine with that, that new piece of equipment operated myself, but. If council has any questions on that?
I asked Andy to come in, I just because we recognize that this is a big expenditure on behalf of the village, and Andy did do his homework on this too. He looked into a bunch of different options and concluded that this was the, that the Kubota was going to be the best fit for what the village needed in this particular case.
Worked with Avery and communities as well, have the same rules, talked with their, their operators, make sure that they're happy with it, there's the good things and the bad news. They'll make sure that they're satisfied with the equipment too, which is, go with this thing, do a similar transaction with the large dump truck that we want to give to municipalities and say, hey, this is, this is the type of thing you guys are getting, it's pretty good for them.
Yep.
More than we guess.
Good.
Getting into that budget, funds this year.
Okay.
Motion to purchase a new Kubota four-wheel tractor, not fixed, eight seventy-four, eight sixty-three and twenty-seven cents.
And related implements?
And related implements.
Second from Budget of Funds.
Budget of Funds.
Motion made up, second by O'Brien. Any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Pedro?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Cas Nicky?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And additionally, from our DPDW leader, he's going to spend another hundred twenty-seven seven ninety-nine twenty-three cents this time for Caterpillar backhoe and loader. And I'm sure you did the same due diligence on this one.
Yes. Exactly. And actually, we'll just machines out to twenty-four years old. We did a lot of due diligence, see back that, and testing out all the major brands down here, JCP case. And I will, I was changing in that period of time. Again, I've talked with other municipalities and said they don't have that, the four sixteen, they bet they wish they did, because it just has the power, the serviceability for Michigan Cat, mobile eyes, always been outstanding to us. Very top-notch company. And with that, we're looking to do a trade-in inside that price there. We have a trade-in value of twenty-four thousand for that machine. Talking with the salesmen, it's basically those machines are in the thirty thousand dollar range for right now resale. Talking with the administrator, feeling that, you know, in that range, it's probably best just to do a trade-in instead of trying to do, go through the other resources of a sale.
Yep.
Having the right up to bits. Paul it off when people look at it, it's a pretty good trade-in price.
Good.
There's, it includes the IT connection kit for our leaf, tin cloth, leaf pickup program, obviously. That's a little bit of a holdup for us, it's on order at this time. And I think they said it was about a ten-week delivery time for just the implements, and then it's still scheduled to work in. So at this point in time, we're kind of looking, hopefully before December first, but somewhere in the November range for everything to be ready.
That'll be close.
So we need to be picking up a few leads with the existing equipment.
Yeah.
Right.
Lester, huh?
Yeah. She gets a, I mean, the machine takes a, it's a lot of work for that machine to do with, you know, the village around twice. And again, it's twenty-four years old, and leaf program's been, how long have they been doing that?
From cheese, probably fifteen, fifteen years.
It's over ten. And there's a lot of road miles, a lot of back and forth for that machine.
I imagine they'd want it to be a little easier to operate too.
Generally, it's the same machine. Yeah, for the most part, there will be the thumb claw, the backhoe unit, still has the manual transmission for what we have right now. Again, that's even the same way, it's the same machine for sure to be traded. They'll be able to, our current machine is, years ago, we had a John Deere backhoe. And when we got rid of that, it was like in eighteen seventy-two, I think. And we had them on the, the new Cat backhoe, and with the same stick nut movements as the John Deere. And we're going to have that done again, but just once, and there is a new one, new stick movements for the, for the new machine.
Good. Any other questions?
Motion to approve purchase of a new Caterpillar AMR backhoe loader, the amount not to exceed a hundred twenty-seven thousand seven hundred ninety-nine and twenty-three cents.
That was from Budget of Funds also.
It was from Budget of Funds, yes. Including the trade-in and the old one, for twenty-four thousand.
Okay. Second. Second. Motion made up, second by Jeremy D. Any questions? Own favor, roll, roll call, please. Roll call. I got it, I caught it.
Cas Nicky?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Pedro?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Finally, onto the Clara Miller.
Did you trade in the old tractor too? You mentioned, yeah, the backhoe.
And the other tractor was a trade-in value of ten thousand eight hundred. That's with the front front room attachment to it, resale, and that was.
Yeah. Okay. You didn't mention, yeah. Okay, thank you, Andy.
Okay, we're finally on to the Clara Miller Park Playground Project bid results. We have our consultant, playground consultant.
Jason McDonald, our prime professional is here with, so, and then Mr. Powell is still here. Just to recap briefly for council, you recall that we made an application for a Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant through the Department of Natural Resources. It was a hundred thousand dollar grant with a hundred thousand dollar match by the village, which is money that has been budgeted and has been set aside. We went through the process, got Jason on board. We had meetings with the Parks Rec Board, with council, got some ideas to the type of playground equipment we wanted to have. Jason did some preliminary pricing on it, and we were a little bit over budget at that point in time. At the request of the DNR, we provided them with a letter that we acknowledged that the specifications that we were developing were over the budgeted amount, but if push came to show, we would assume responsibility for the difference in cost. That allowed us to go forward. Jason, working with Mike's office, finalized the plan specifications and bid documents. The project did go out to bid, as indicated in the memo I put together for you, the bids that we opened the end of August were all significantly over the amount that we had estimated the cost of the project to be, really by, I think Jason, by roughly about twenty-five percent more than what we'd estimated. So I've laid out for you here in my September eighth memo, some of the options we have going forward. The one option that seemed the most attractive to me and seemed to make the most sense, and I believe Jason and Mike agree, but they're here, they can obviously speak for themselves tonight. Because of the timing of the project and the deadline for the completion of the work, which would be the end of next summer, the middle of next summer, we still have time, rather than moving forward with any of these bids at this point in time, or actually, we'd have to go back to the state first to get them to review all the documents before we could actually accept a bid. Rather than go through the process, we had the option at this point in time to basically just take a timeout, if you will, and then probably before the end of the year, go ahead and rebid the project in hopes that costs are going to come down. Whether that's because costs would actually come down, which potentially they may not, I suppose they could go up. The other thing that had struck me is that once the, the summer and building season over is over, then maybe some contractors will be anxious to get work online for next year. So maybe they can sharpen their pencils, maybe we'll get some additional bids above and beyond the ones that we did receive. So my recommendation at this point is to hold off on any further reaction and have us put the project out to bid again, probably in the month of November. And that's my thinking. Jason, I don't know if I'm going to step to the podium, share your thoughts, you have, Mike, if you have any thoughts as well.
Yeah, it is always disappointing when bids come back higher than you estimated what Michigan said is. uh, what, um, what you all said is, true, we were thinking to just press the pause button right now, reach out and wait, work with the, uh, MNR, uh, grant consultant, or the grant, uh, administrator, I should say, and, um, look at ways to, uh, reduce the scope or change some materials. I don't know if you remember way back when, during the application, you're, you're held to a certain number of things on the application, you can't just pull those out because the application's graded based on those items. Um, I do want to talk to, uh, Mary Carlock and talk, talk to her about certain options that we have, because I do think that just going out to bid with the same bid set, you probably get the same pricing, so we have to change something. One of the things I'd like to talk to her about, without getting too much into the weeds, is the permeable concrete sidewalk, can we go to a different permeable option? I'm convinced that that item gave contractors a bit of heartburn, and so they had their costs in other areas, just to cover their costs. I talked to one contractor, and said, nobody ever does it anymore in Michigan, it's a complete failure. Uh, one of them said they can't even find somebody right now to do that work, that would be important to do that work, and they know of one concrete plant that actually makes that mix. So I think that's a big thing, um, that I'd like to talk to her about. There's also other options, and I know this goes against what we originally, uh, decided to do. There are two standalone play equipment items on the playground plan right now. There's two large ones that the grant, uh, is holding us to, there's two smaller ones that, if push comes to shove, we could possibly eliminate those that would reduce the price. I know that's not favorable to the, the community probably to do, but that, that is an option. There's also an option of going bare bones on all the landscaping that's, that's planned in there. It's, it's not a ton more than what was, uh, spelled out in the grant application, but it is, you know, it is dollars, so we can look at that as well. So I just kinda wanna give you an overview of where, where our mind is at right now, maybe more, uh, pulling it and then talking with the grant administrator, kinda laying out our plan. And I, if you have to answer questions, too.
Uh, Jason, if we pulled out those two standalones, if we decided later, could we put them back in, like, two years from now, three years from now?
There is a way to do that. What, what would be required, though, is to cut through the, or replace rubber surface in. That's not the end of the work, that can be repaired and patched over, it would just be a visual, it would look exactly like the, the rubber surface, that's right next to it.
I think it makes sense to, to pull it up right now, I mean, just to, to investigate our options and go out for rebid later. Yeah?
Yeah, I agree.
Makes perfect sense.
Yeah, don't wanna mess up the whole thing just because of that.
No, no. You know, see what, see what their, the grant requirements are gonna be, like I said, talk to, talk to the DNR and see what, you know, what we can do. It's, it's a lot over. It's a lot of money, so.
She, along the way, has been, uh, very cooperative. She actually suggested, you know, that, in, in the documents, there's, there's options that they provide, and this is one of them.
Good.
Going out for rebid, um, hoping to get a, a better price, so, uh, she's also said that the deadline for the grant, uh, time period would be extended slightly to get to that, so, um, confidential work was.
Perfect. Anybody have any problems with that? I don't know, makes, makes total sense to me.
So what, what would you propose instead of the permeable cement?
Well, instead of permeable concrete?
Concrete.
It would be, I would, I would suggest, uh, it's called porous papers, so they look like, for instance, there's slight gaps in between that water.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And that, um, it wouldn't require an underdrain underneath, and all contractors do it. They, they have no problem doing it, they can get somebody out there the next week. It's not, it doesn't, like I said before, it's not that hard for them at the, that kind of, yeah, I'm sorry, permeable concrete.
Good.
Yeah. Good.
Perfect.
Just so everybody's clear, we're still dead serious about moving forward with the project and with the grant. I don't want anybody to, to think that we're talking about scrapping the whole project, because we're not. I mean, we've got, uh, time and effort invested in this at this point in time, number one. I, number two, personally, I think the park needs some updates. I think everybody agrees that, and, and number three, um, I don't think it would bode well for us with the DNR down the road if we just decided that we were gonna throw our cars in at this point in time, so. We're, we still wanna do the project.
Sure. Yep. I think we're all set on that. We'll, all pretty much agree.
We can also start developing plans for fundraising and sponsoring things like the benches that we're gonna be putting in and things like that, to offset some of our costs and to make a dent, at least, in some of those things.
We've committed to upgrading the park for a while now, a lot of years. I think it's a great, great way to go, so. We pretty much have consensus on that, right?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
All right. Authorization to sell the two thousand fifteen Chevy Tahoe to the highest qualified bidder, and also authorization to sell the two thousand sixteen police pursuit. Sure, dear. To the highest qualified bidder.
Motion to accept the highest bid, I hope.
Motion by Doug. Second by, who's that? McNabb? Uh, roll call, please.
Kaznakie?
Yes.
Jeremini?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes. We are at the second call in the public. Still early. Um, it's opportunity for anybody to discuss anything, even on the, or off the agenda. Anybody wanna speak regarding the public? Okay, uh, open, motion to open in the public?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Doug, second by Kaznakie, to open, call, second call, uh, on favor. Motion carries, thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Dave Jeffery, I'm actually, uh, president of the village. I, I live just south of McCoy on Rustic Lane. I was wondering if you guys have any hope of all lakes, do something out there?
No. And could you, could, could we get your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, one five six three Rustic Lane.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I have actually three quick items. The other one, you guys would never consider going south of McCoy, right, Lane to pick up leaves, would you? If, if you prepay the, the village, yourself? And I live on the oldest house on, on Rustic Lane, and the amount of leaves I get is horrendous. Yeah, my, my neighbors is all mulled, I'm like, yeah, still, mulching, it's a lot of bags.
Andy, do you have any comments on that one?
You guys would set the price, obviously.
Ooh, you just spent one thousand.
They could use a boost, he's hungry.
Motion for the tractor.
I think that goes back to what, kinda what Mike said earlier about mixing personal and village funds, is there a problem with, that would go to a higher level of my pay grade, uh, answer, if that's even available? That's off of McCoy?
Yeah, I mean, and I, I see you guys come back, figure what a road it is, it's like just getting cornered by the street.
Water lane, right there. Yeah. Where the ponds are. I mean, in order to pond this front.
Exactly, right with the pond, that, right.
There's that short little, other, like, right?
Yeah, I, if it's not in the village, I'm not sure, they would have to go to an administrative government, I don't know, answer.
Yeah, it should be more like paid for service, but you've got some liability issues, things that nature, possibly with an individual, first, with a personal, you know, just one individual, whereas, yeah, it would make more sense to do something with Wald Lake that.
Yeah, I think, what the village and tree and are talking about.
Oh, Commerce Township.
Could be some kind of an intergovernmental, governmental agreement with Commerce Township. Rustica providing service in the township.
Do you know why our lessons to Say Wolverine Lake? It shouldn't, actually. I know. Every, and you can, and you can point it out to them, just, uh, when you go to the Secretary of State's office.
You can explain to them that there are some on Rustic Lane that say Wolverine Lake, there are some actually in the Eagle Pond subdivision that say, uh, and I think what they do is they pinpoint, you know, when they do that, and it's right on the border, so they pick one, and that's what they use, so. There are some over, actually, that have Wolverine Lake addresses that are in Commerce, some that are in Wald Lake, but it's still Say Wolverine Lake.
Take your real headache, 'cause you tell them, yeah, I'm actually in Commerce, oh, sorry, you know, it's, it's over in the lake, you know, and, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Second by, motion by Duff, second by O'Brien. On favor. I oppose, motion carries. All right. Set topics for September twenty-seventh work session.
Motion by Fergal.
Thank you. That was a motion by Duff, second by Jeremini. Any discussion on that? On favor. I oppose, motion carries. Okay, we're gonna go to closed session after, uh, item seventeen. We can motion.
Just, just, I'm sorry, just so we're clear, because the Open Meetings Act requires that the litigation that we would be talking about is the Village of Wolverine Lake versus Hafley, Hafley, however it's pronounced, local county circuit court case number twenty-twenty-one one nine one six seven six CC, which involves condemnation action.
And we need a roll call vote, please.
Correct.
So.
You ready?
I don't have a motion.
Did you?
I think so.
Is it making a motion, I can't remember the motion. Going downhill already fast. Okay. Yep, I guess we do, so. A roll call, please. Yep.
Uh, Jeremini?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Nedro?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Kaznakie?
Yes.
Great. Uh, pending business, I don't believe we have any.
None, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Update from our police chief Ellsworth.
I'll make this as brief as I can. Obviously, we've been very busy with community activities with, uh, the deputy chief. We went to a Boy Scout recruiting fair in Commerce on Saturday morning, and then on to the corn roast, which was probably one of the best-run, uh, events I've seen down there, that was very good. Um, I wish it was better attended, but it was, it was, I was really impressed with everything that was going on there, and there was a lot of, a lot of good stuff there. Um, second, we have our new Tahoe in service now, uh, you'll see that driving around if you haven't already. Uh, we're gonna be getting our new radios sometime in October, that comes, the majority of that came from the nine-one-one fund. We did have to purchase two extra, uh, handheld radios, because we only had eight full-time officers, and that's the only thing that they would get us, other than the nine-one-one calls, they didn't include the marine officer or any reserve officer. So the village has purchased two additional radios, um, and we are just waiting for them to be placed in service sometime in October, so. Um, but, uh, other than that, Deputy Chief Sodik is settling in nicely and making some great improvements on how things are done procedurally. He's brought some really good ideas, uh, from his past experience, and, uh, it's working out well. We haven't managed to ruffle too many feathers, and so things seem to be going really well, and very pleased with, uh, the way things are working out, so.
Black cameras?
Black cameras. We do have one installed. Uh, one has been installed at Wolverine Drive and South Commerce. We're waiting on the permitting from Oakland County for the ones along South Commerce, because that goes the Oakland County right, road right away. So, uh, hopefully those will be coming this next month. Um, we haven't had any hits on them yet, but, you know, it's coming, I'm sure, and it's just a matter of time, and, uh, but, uh, we have been approving, we've given, been given approval by, I think, a total of pretty close to a thousand cameras. So we actually have cameras all across the state, and actually all across the nation, all the way from Florida to California and Nevada, uh, a lot around Chicago, uh, believe it or not, but, uh, Michigan State Police, a lot of our larger organizations have given us access to their cameras, so we have many, many cameras to be, uh, to have available to us, so. Um, it's, it's, again, um, we'll see how it goes. Uh, it's kind of a two-year thing, we'll, we'll reevaluate after two years, or you all will reevaluate after two years, um, and, and see if it's, uh, get our bang for the buck, so. But, uh, it's, uh, we, we're excited to see how things work out.
Good. Seven more haircuts. Thank you. Update from Treasure Hanson.
Um, we closed out our tax season, so, um, I mean, it's not closed out, but, um, to pay your taxes on time has come and gone, and it went really well, uh, this year. Um, I'm getting ready for the audit, starting to make my preparations for that, and congratulations on the, um, corn roast. I heard it was wonderful and well-attended, and it's awesome, so, that's it for me.
Great, thank you. Mr. Gillem.
Um, as far as the corn roast is concerned, yeah, it was a great event, and I wanna single out two groups. Uh, first is the Parks and Recreation Board. Um, it's a, it's a long day, it's a full day for the people on the Parks and Recreation Board, the work that they do, but I don't, what I don't think a lot of people understand is that, um, the board has been having meetings specifically to plan the corn roast for probably, probably since the first of the year, for six or eight months. So, just an awful, awful lot of work, and I, I commend them for all the work, and every year, it seems like the corn roast gets better and things seem to run more smoothly, too. So again, my hats off to Mark and everybody else on the Parks and Rec Board. Along the same lines, um, hats off to the guys at the DPW, um, the work that they did helping get the corn roast set up, number one, but I know they paid some extra attention to the park last week, getting it ready for the corn roast, and the park looked great. And, um, I was there for most of the day and received many compliments over the course of the day from a number of our residents about how good they thought the park looked. So again, I mentioned this to Andy and the guys earlier, but I wanted to go public, that we appreciate all the work that they did out there to support the corn roast. So it makes a big difference. Um, back to more regular business, the, um, we had a work session last month on the short-term rentals. Um, the village attorney has completed a draft of an ordinance. Um, the ordinance was completed last week. Um, I thought about sticking it on tonight's agenda for discussion, but I decided it would be better to wait until September, because I wanna have a chance to circulate that ordinance amongst the property owners that were in our work session, so they have a chance to read it and weigh in on it, so. Um, when you get your packets for September.
October, October.
October, you're right, thank you.
We're already through September.
Yeah.
Hard to believe.
Yeah. You get your packets for October. Um, the short-term rental ordinance will be in there, we'll plan on talking about it at that time. So, just a reminder, we have a negotiating committee meeting after, the regular meeting ends tonight, and finally, congratulations to the Nedro family, they've got a wedding this weekend.
Yeah. Now more than that, but, thank you. Council comments. Mr. Kaznakie.
All right, yeah, I was gonna also comment on the corn roast, it was great weather, couldn't ask for a better day weather-wise, and the turnout I thought was really good, I don't know how, I don't, I don't know how you could, uh, there's no tickets just for attending it, so, uh, how many attended this year versus last year, it's just ticket sales for food and stuff, but, I, it was a lot of fun, a lot of fun, and, um, I had no idea, uh, we had gone out to dinner last night to Billy's Tipton Bar, and that's the home base for the band, Two XL, I had no idea. So if anybody missed them and wants to go listen to them, you can hear them up there. I'm also thinking it maybe helped a lot, is that addition on the bathroom, you know, with the storage, the partner records, all that stuff, and I, I'm sure that was a big, big help to have that, you know?
Huge difference.
Yeah, huge difference, so, um, and I know there was comments that in the past, they've had more NHS students help, and there were not a lot this year, so maybe try to round up a little, more for next year. I wanna congratulate the, the good work on, the fall subcommittee is done, on pulling all that together, and just, as an FYI to, uh, Chief Ellsworth, I was at Costco today, and you could have coffee with, uh, Richard at, uh, Costco today, so maybe I do coffee with Ellsworth and, and the DPW chief as a substitute.
At your house?
Oh, my house? Oh, yeah. Got a lot of room. Got a lot of room in my house, no?
Electrifying experience.
Yeah.
Yeah, would be electrifying.
So anyway, that's it, thank you.
Good job with the cornrows, I was not able to anticipate anything else going on, but good job. That's about it.
Likewise, good job with the cornrows, guys, and, uh, everybody have a good month, and congratulations on the wedding.
Yeah. Should be the last one. Mr. McNabb?
Um, acknowledge everybody with the cornrows. Um, had a lot of good feedback, everybody enjoyed the cornhole tournament, and it all went really well, so congratulations.
Thanks. Mark?
Um, also the fishing tournament, uh, in August. I want to thank Cody for, and Brian for working hard setting all that up, and the Lakes Area bait shop for being a great supporter of that. A lot of bass were caught, not a lot of anything else, but a lot of bass. Uh, and of course for the cornrows, thank you to Penny League Market for all they do every year with the food, and Kaya Smokehouse this year donating the boards, the bags for the cornhole tournaments, saving a ton of money, and everything was the same that way, which went really well. Congratulations to Linda, who thought that up and set it up this year. Thanks to the DPW, park was awesome, everything was laid out perfectly, makes everything so much easier, uh, the day of, with how you guys had it all going. And, uh, first responders, thank you for coming out and having the kids play and have a good time on all the vehicles and everything else. And of course, all our volunteers and everybody on Parks and Rec who, yeah, have been putting in a lot of time getting it all going.
Great. Um, couple items, I guess. Pam, for those of you that don't know, she's officially a homeless council member. Her house, like Mike said, was electrified, got hit by lightning.
Oh.